Veterans Day coming up this week. We have the VFW post eighty-seven fifty-nine, which is going to present the colors for us. All right. Thank you all for doing that. Why don't you do the invocation?
Sure. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. As we go into this Veterans Day week and Veterans Day month, just want to thank you for all of our veterans, for everybody who has served or is serving for our country. I ask that you be with them, be with their families, help them, guide them, protect them. And thank you for everything they do and allowing them to continue to keep us safe. I ask that you watch over each of us in this meeting tonight as we get to the county business. Allow us to make the best decisions possible and continue to help us to be leaders and guide us as we go into the future of Amelia. Amen.
Amen. Thank you all. Like I say, the VFW post and everything they did for our country and the flags tonight. So thank you all, gentlemen. Well, that opens the November meeting for the Board of Supervisors. All Supervisors are present and we'll get started. I get approval or an amendment to the agenda. Amendments. I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Brings us to the approval of the... Motion on the floor to approve the agenda as presented. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Moving to the approval of the minutes. We have the October board's meeting and we have a joint meeting between the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. Any comments? Contain a motion to approve as a block.
Motion to approve as a block.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Motion on the floor to approve the minutes as presented. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. April finance. Approval of the financial records. Any questions or concerns? Entertain a motion to approve him as a block also.
Motion to approve as a block.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Motion on the floor to approve the financial report as presented. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Brings us to the public comment time. Anybody would like to address the board? Feel free. Try to keep your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address when you come up to speak. Comment period is now open. I have to turn it off.
Can you hear me?
You might have to hold it, Ms. Webb.
Oh, hold it. Okay, sorry. Good evening. My name is Joanne Scott Webb. I live at one-three-two-two-five Cheston Landing Drive, Chesterville, Virginia, two-three-eight-three-eight. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you once again tonight. First, I want to commend our Amelia Fire Departments for the rapid response and professionalism in containing the fire and smoke that we had in Washington Street several weeks ago. It was an amazing experience to be there. Everyone came out to see it, but the staff there, our fire departments were just amazing. They got there almost instantly. I was just very thankful. The issue of private property rights again is foremost in my mind tonight. The Amelia Monitor on November third issue, I had a discussion on page one and then again on page ten. And it talks about the fact that if, it talks about prime farmland. And it talks about the fact that even if a landowner no longer wants to farm, they won't have restrictions. It implies restrictions. Anytime you have a restriction, one restriction leads to another restriction. So reading this made the hairs on the back of my head stand up. If a farmer wants to retire, a generation may be to farm, maybe sell the farmer's retirement plan or gift it to his children who may or may not want to be farmers and they will sell it. So we're eliminating the opportunity for him for solar farming, for him and his children or heirs. The opportunity would provide income and keep an eye on the family, maybe. This is being denied to him. So maybe can he sell to a developer who will build a subdivision, maybe fifty, hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty homes? But maybe this right may be denied him also. Others do not like this idea as they often like open space and video farm provides. It feels like the farmer can only sell to another farmer, which limits his options, his choices, his income. Is this fair? Is this right? I know I've spoken to all of you individually and also before these meetings, and I'm convinced that each one of you truly respects and values private property rights. I completely agree with it. I think it's very evident. Several of you are your family's own farmlands, and this is also personal to many of you. How would you feel if you were in this situation? Those who are not farming, make their living otherwise, or deciding the property rights and the values for these farmers. Our forefathers fought and died so that we might have God-given rights and freedoms. Private property rights must be secure. Our liberty does not exist. Our private property rights separate us from communist and totalitarian countries. We seem to be moving in the wrong direction here. I thank you for your time. May God bless you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Bobby Lipes, sixteen-hundred Richmond Road, Amelia, Virginia. Chairman, I've got a couple of issues that I want to discuss, and I may take more than just three minutes, and I'd ask permission to do that if possible. I'll keep it as brief as possible.
Yes, sir.
On several of the opportunities we've been here to speak, I've been able to voice my opinion as to what a lot of things is going on in the county. And I've had some people tell me, okay, that's your opinion, and that's all you're entitled to. And I agree with that. So I took the advantage of Election Day yesterday, and I worked the polls. And I went there at four-thirty yesterday morning. I stayed there until ten-thirty last night, talking to the constituents in the county of our district. And I asked different questions. I wanted to get an idea of how the people themselves felt about the different issues that we've been dealing with. And the things that I asked about was the solar farms, the handle building, and I wanted the feedback on it. Through that process, about ninety percent of the people I talked to do not want solar farms in the area. Couple of them said, well, it depends on what benefits it is. But the rest said, no, they didn't want to destroy the county with that. So that was their opinions, their thoughts, and I felt like it was fair to ask them. I took it on my own. And I also asked about the handle building. Well, in the process of that, I noticed that the age group of about fifty-five and older, they knew what the handle building was. The rest of them didn't even know what a handle building was. So they weren't for or against or any ideal what the benefits was to do anything with it. And in that process, I also attended a couple of meetings over the last month to get an idea of what's going on from behind the scenes also. I went to the meeting where the Board Supervisor was invited to go to the solar farms meeting to discuss the agendas on that. I didn't see a lot of real merit in that, even though the discussions was done. A lot of buy-in from the different constituents in the county that just wasn't interested in the solar farm because they don't think it's a profitable thing. They don't think it's a benefit for the county. But, you know, that's still, we leave our supervisors to make those decisions. And on the handle building itself, the different ones that I talked to, I didn't even know them personally, so just point-blank questions. It wasn't to seek out anybody individually to find out what the thoughts and feelings was. The biggest response I got was, we're just not at the time right now to invest money that we don't know that we're going to have in the near future. The economy is in a situation that I don't feel like, right now, we should be raising taxes to cover expenses of something that we don't need. And with that, I went to the meeting that I was invited to go to. I was invited to go on Facebook. I got chastised on Facebook about my comments on it. I was invited to go to Tiscipac. When I got there, if looks could say words, then looks was pretty strong, but at the same time, we move forward on that. I personally listened to the different arguments on it. Mr. Robinson asked same question four times. Never got an accurate answer each time that I could pinpoint out of it. He asked the board or the team to justify spending the money. They gave reasons. They gave wants and desires, but they never gave real merit as to what the justification was. Some words that I did hear that I didn't think was really appropriate was, we want this. It was a, "we want." I never heard need in any of it anywhere, and I didn't see any justifications. I listened to the numbers and everything that went over. With all of that and due respect, my personal opinion is, from my background in building and construction, that to me, the smart thing to do for the county right now is preserve the building to where it is, dry it in, make sure it's protected, maintenance, and let it set track, because we're not in a position to move forward in the money it would take to restore it until further due comes. And for the solar farm, the perspective on that was, we've already got a couple of them going in the county. Let's put a hold on and watch them, see what it is. You've got a five-year renewal permits on it. Hold up and study them and see what kind of progress you're making with it, if you're beneficial, if you're not. If they're doing what they're supposed to do, if they're maintaining the rules and the regulations and this type of thing. Let's see how that manifests first before we go into popping them up all over the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lipes.
Hello, Martin Conkle, one-six-two-eleven Church Street. Not going to repeat a lot of what Bobby said. I was at the same meeting. I do want to thank the people that did put in the effort in that committee of the handle building. You know, it definitely was a labor of love, that's pretty clear, and I do appreciate that and respect that. Problem was, my main thing that I took away from that is I think the timing of everything is totally wrong. I feel the community center thing is more of a forced goal because there's not really another goal at this time. Doesn't mean that a few years from now. Might be more desirable to a private developer for something that probably more people in this county would like to have. You know, they had private investors look at it, possible restaurant or brewery. I got that out of the meeting, and nobody wanted to touch it. But this was during a pandemic. Nobody's really putting money into restaurants and breweries and stuff while places like that are closing down. I think we did cam into ingredients that we do want to see the building preserved. We'd like to see something done with it. I think money would be better spent on gutters and some of that basic maintenance versus another study to see what we can do with it. We have spent so much money on studies for ball fields and stuff like this in this county on previous boards that have turned into nothing. I mean, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars on studies that we spend the past several years that have never materialized into anything else in this county. So I think we should probably put the brakes on that, look at a better direction. Maybe now is not the time. Doesn't mean a few years. It won't be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conkle.
Hey, Grierls, one-seven-three-four-one Porehouse Road. I've communicated with all of you all over the last week, either face-to-face or by phone or email. So I want to say, I heard you. I heard what you said. I read the hundred-and-forty-some posts on Facebook. I heard what those people said. I hear you. I understand there's issues, money, timing, proper use, justification. Fact is, there's a county-owned lighted building in the middle of the village. It's been that way for decades. That's a fact. I believe that that impacts our economic development and our community development. So I'm going to continue to look for a solution for the handle building. And I would ask that you all continue to look for a solution for the handle building. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Grierls. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Allison Cruz. I live in Jetersville. I'm here tonight on behalf of Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District to share with y'all our annual report. Pass that to Taylor and share it around. If you have any questions, I'm sharing my card, and please share with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Anybody else? All right, we'll be moving on. Brings us to our VDOT, monthly VDOT report.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Worley is taking a well-deserved vacation. I'm her assistant for maintenance, Justin Pachín. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Administrator. Just, it's my honor to provide the November two thousand twenty-two monthly report. So Amelia Area Headquarters is responsible for maintenance. Going primary mowing on Route three-sixty, thirty-eight, and one-fifty-three. Three-sixty is completed. We're working on one-fifty-three today, and tomorrow should be wrapped up this week and Route thirty-eight next week, depending on precipitation amounts from this tropical storm. We may have tree trimming Route thirty-eight. That's the next target for us. Been looking at this one for a while. That's a right-arm mowing attachment. That's the next spot. Possible asphalt patch lower end of six-fourteen. As y'all are probably aware, we surfed treated that road in two thousand nineteen, and it has washboarded on us. So we've put additional asphalt in that location, and we'll probably have to end up patching out pieces of it to get a better ride. Slope mowing on selected routes county-wide is for sight distance concerns, primarily on the secondary network. This is the good time of year to be doing that. Now that the leaves are off and we have a better idea of the thickness of the vegetation, we can get in there and chew it up with our right-arm mowers. Shoulder stone operation is ongoing on Route three-sixty and six-sixteen. Just saw the invoices for about four hundred tons of crusher run come through, so we're stockpiling that material and making sure our dump trucks are ready for that operation. We'll be filling the low points on six-sixteen and three-sixty with that crusher run, obviously, and we'll do some shoulder clipping in tandem. The hope here is a nice, smooth shoulder patching on westbound three-sixty at Route three-oh-seven. We have some shoulder deterioration outside lane. We should be getting that taken care of by the end of November. For land use, nothing at this time. Traffic studies and special requests. Route three-sixty, Patrick Henry Highway, the traffic engineering has completed the speed study. I do believe Ms. Worley has provided that to y'all. Recommended retention of existing fifty-five mile-an-hour speed limit. Route three-sixty, bridge approaches. Task order has been issued to paving contractor to smooth the approaches. That work has been completed. I do believe we have to stripe that. In construction, Route six-twenty-one, Folks Bridge over the Appmatics. The project began with a closure in fall of two thousand twenty-one, and the project completed and the road reopened October nineteenth. That's all I have. Have any questions for me? That's mere patching operation, sir? Yeah, so we reached out. We agree. We reached out to our district folks, our pavement management specialists to try to give us a recommendation as to the course of action, or we could attempt to throw additional asphalt at the problem. However, we want to make sure with the temperatures decreasing that that's the right approach. If we do that, we might lose it, and it may ravel on us on the roadway if the temperatures aren't right. So we are going to continue to monitor that, and we will be working on it through this month into December, sir, as long as we can, as long as we have temperature. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What I can do is go back and take a look at the last time a traffic study was conducted in that location. Again, that's six-oh-four from three-sixty, the railroad tracks. And if its statute of limitations has run out in that study, we certainly can run another one, no problem there. Hey, Cruz is nice. Yes, sir. We can get a study on that one, sir.
Sir.
You mentioned the traffic speed study for three-sixty. I cannot find where I've gotten a copy of that report. Did, would you?
Yes.
Ask Ms. Worley to make sure that gets sent out to us or? Or? Well, he said it was finished and should have been sent to us.
It should have been. The last copy that I have is not sealed. They have a little bit of red tape before an engineer will put their stamp on that. But for all intents and purposes, from my understanding, the study has been completed. So an oversight on my part, and we'll get that to you as quickly as I can.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for the Folks Bridge. Looks pretty down there. It's good. It's flat. Appreciate y'all did a good job on that.
I'll pass that along, sir. Our Ledgeburg District Construction Group took care of that one for us. We alternate responsibilities across the Appomattox. That was their work. Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
And I had a complaint just yesterday about the shoulders on 616 between Rocky Ford or Folks Bridge and Lemon Town. So I see y'all are working on that. So that's good.
Yes, sir.
Also got another question. This is for all of us. On the speed limit, it's recommended 55 through basically what I would call the courthouse area, the food line, district. Do we have any leeway as a county to say, probably need to lower? I get a lot of complaints that speed is too fast, especially with the yellow light, left turn on yellow. It's hard to judge a car coming at you at 55 or 60. Do we have any leeway that we could slow them down?
Sir, from my understanding, the board can pass a resolution. I think I've seen that happen in other counties, Palatane and Chesterfield. However, when it comes to traffic engineering as a maintenance guy, I'm talking out of my league, I can certainly get you a response on that. But I know there have been resolutions in the past to decree a speed limit.
What does the board feel about having staff move in that direction to see if we could lower it? I went through Green Bay not long ago, and Green Bay got one old post office.
I've always wondered why you.
I don't know if it's 45 or 30. I think it's 35.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Yeah, I remember Ms. Worley telling us those are just basically old leftover ones that don't currently meet the criteria, and they don't go back and change them, which I think is rather frustrating. I don't have any issues with the current speed. The study proved what we already saw. That wasn't the primary factor for accidents, but whatever y'all want to do.
There are a few key points in this study, and it's unfortunate that you don't have it in front of you for this meeting. Again, I apologize. But we will get this to you. My copy was dated in September, but I will get this to you as soon as I get back to the office.
Every three to four days, somebody has a wreck down there. That's probably the hottest topic on Facebook is who wrecked this week at Food Line?
Well, if it's all right with the board, I'd like to get staff to look into that to see what the process is to possibly. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Harvey. The Amelia County Public Schools K-12 enrollment is 1597, pre-K enrollment 1667, and ADM is 1585. On Sunday, November 6, three Amelia County Public School students were recognized for their artwork at the Longwood Arts Awards. These students were Blake Rice from the elementary, Abigail Terrio from the middle school, and Todd Spurlock for the high school. From my observations, we were the only county that had three students, one from each school, recognized at this award ceremony. On Friday, November 11, the high school will be hosting the annual Veterans' Day Assembly at 10:30. Veterans in the community are welcome to attend, along with the student body. Our November school board meeting is scheduled for Monday. That's this coming Monday, November 14 at 7:00 p.m. And also in the month of November, the high school will be providing the second annual day of service within the community for our high school freshmen. That's scheduled for Thursday, November 17. In your packet, you have the most recent financial reports. Mr. Trump will be sharing this information, as well as an appropriation request.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm sharing with you the October FY23 finance reports. At this point in the year, we anticipate our operational revenues and expenditures being at about 33.3%. We are well below that mark, with revenues and expenditures currently at 24.69%. Last month, Mr. Wyatt quite accurately pointed out that the cafeteria has been quite profitable through the past year. On this report, the cafeteria fund shows a net loss of $45,119.64 to date. However, when comparing that to previous months, this reflects a profit in the cafeteria fund for the month of October in the amount of $4,301.35. This is a modest profit, and we are continuing to work with Chart Wells to increase efficiency in cafeteria offerings so that we are able to continue to offset some rise in prices with some of our purchases for our food service, and also the difference in our less than reimbursement rates this year that we addressed last month. Currently, our textbook funds expenditure stands at $198,166.68, representing 29.8% of that budget. Tonight, we are asking for your approval for an appropriation that requires no local match. This appropriation is in the amount of $164,758.33. These are ARPA funds that were appropriated in the central appropriations section of the state budget this past summer for a $1,000 bonus payment in FY23 for each SOQ-funded instructional and support position.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Was that appropriation included in the board book?
That was sent on October 26. It was responded to.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Gentlemen, what do y'all, what's your pleasure on the appropriation? It's an ARPA fund with no local match.
Right.
Motion to approve. I have motion on the floor to approve appropriation from ARPA funds. More discussion?
I would just request that we make sure that we had it documented. I mean, other than that.
All in favor of the appropriation, raise your hand. Brings us to the supervisors' activity and committee reports. Mr. Robinson, you want to lead us off?
I had my normal CPMT meeting. Supervisor Jones and myself, we toured Piedmont Juvenile Detention Center. Looked at that facility. So pretty tight-run ship over there. I was surprised. And we had a little meeting with the Hindle Building last week. That's about it.
Start by thanking those who supported the election this week by working the polls either on Election Day or all the work that it took for volunteers in advance. Thank you, Mr. Leipes. I know you mentioned you did, but also the many other volunteers that it takes to make that happen. Mr. Leipes also mentioned two meetings, including the one Mr. Robinson just mentioned about Hindle Building and one other around solar. I didn't get invited to either of those, so I don't know. Apparently, public was invited, but I guess the invitations didn't go out more broadly. It's kind of not sure what happened with that. And then I wanted to comment that while we always appreciate public comments, and I wish when meet times and we didn't have something really controversial, people were providing more feedback, I want to make sure people do keep in mind that comments are opinions, as Mr. Leipes also pointed out, and that doesn't mean everything that's said is factual. For example, tonight it was mentioned that people didn't want to see a tax increase for the Hindle Building. There's been no discussion or proposal on that. The funds that we've put on hold were already included in the budget without the need for a tax increase. There's also mentions about cost for, for example, a sports facility study. That was actually done for free and didn't cost the county any money either. Just good reference points. Just make sure we seek facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dees. Mr. Jones?
Having this meeting a week early. I still have a meeting to go to next week from CRC. So I did attend a STEPS meeting, and I think they have a representative to speak here tonight. Mr. Robinson and myself went to the Farmville Regional Jail and Juvenile Center, and I'll agree with him that that place is pretty tight-run. I mean, the place was clean, well-maintained. The staff was very courteous to us. They showed us everything if we asked a question. I brought up a comment to Mr. Townsend at the jail. I asked him, it's been word going around that they may close some of these juvenile centers. If they did, what would happen to the one in Farmville if they chose to close it? He said in all likelihood that we would take the building over. We would have a use for it. But, he said, I want to point out one thing. They're not going to close this building. I said, why is that? He said, we serve too large of a geographic area of Virginia. If they close any, they're going to close some of the smaller ones that just serve one little locality. And he said, they'll be the first ones closed. That being said, that sort of summed up my opinion on what needs to be done up there. I was at the Hindle Building meeting. I was invited. I showed up. And the first thing I commented I made that the attendance for the Hindle Building broke volumes to me. They had four people there. Four people. If the county is that much that they've been on Facebook saying that we have all these followers wanting somebody to do something with it, where were they at? You cannot go by. And one of them did bring up, he wanted to take a poll and go through the Facebook and et cetera to do a poll. Well, anyone of common sense knows you can't do that because the majority of people don't get on Facebook. So they, you know, the information is a little wishy-washy. I mean, I myself, I went to school in that building for nine years, and I love old stuff. I don't want to see it tore down. And I think we're going to keep it. Maintenance on it and all, just like you'll see it. Times are tough right now. This is not the time to be wasting money. We need to watch every nickel and dime we got because we don't know what the future holds. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Wyatt?
I've had a few meetings this time. The Heartland Regional Meeting, we didn't have a quorum, so we didn't do much there, just informational. We had a meeting this past week as well. State's still struggling, can't find workers, trying to find stuff to do. The Joint Planning Commission meeting we had, and I've just had a few other small community things, but.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. I also had the Joint Planning Commission meeting. That's about as far as the meetings went. We did, Mr. Robinson, myself, and Mr. Wyatt did attend the flag raising in front of the clerk's office today. It was the original, one of the original flags that flew over 9/11. Mr. Leipes is in possession of it at this time. And this flag has been all around the world, in the country. It was a privilege to be there and watch it raised. All right, that brings us to the IT committee report. Mr. Stern is going to bring us up to speed on the IT, what it's been challenged with and what it has completed.
Good evening. Excuse me. So the board supervisors approved this IT committee to be formed to assist with implementing IT-related tasks and functions. That committee has met a number of times. I'm thinking about six. And things have happened. May not be announced, but that's kind of what you want. So to kind of go over what we've accomplished so far, there were some security things that needed to be addressed to ensure people weren't getting to places they need to be. Documents, people's information is all protected, and any issues were addressed and have been resolved. County is protected, but we continue to look at any security issues, coming. We look at current software. We're looking at newer software for implementing to improve the security of the county. Some other things that have been accomplished, the wireless system that was purchased in 2022 has been implemented. It is functional. It is secure. Functional meaning county personnel can use it, and the public can use it. Those two networks will never cross paths because of the way things have been configured. We are moving towards implementing cloud storage for county documents in a secure environment. Each department will have its own SharePoint site. Only the people that are allowed to be in those sites are given those permissions. We continue to move towards that to keep the county up to date. Those sites are being backed up, encrypted, stored off-site. Let's see. The servers that were implemented in December 2020 are in use. They provide county personnel with network-level services such as domain name services, DNS, IP addressing, or maintaining each network separately. That will be more utilized when the new phone system comes in play, as the phones will be set up on their own network. The IT committee will continue to meet and develop tasks to continue moving the county infrastructure technology forward. Not everything can be announced to the public because information technology has got a lot of security behind it. So we can't necessarily share everything. We can share that things are being done. We have acquired proposals for the new phone system. I believe we're very close. I'd like for Mary Beth to comment on that, as she has been leading this for us.
Good evening. The IT committee is preparing to upgrade the current phone system to a voice-over internet setup. The following steps have been taken to begin the process to procure the new phone system. We have reviewed the infrastructure currently in place for the phones and the internet services. We have created a document that outlines the county buildings and the departments that are housed in those buildings. Also included in that document are internet speeds that are currently being utilized, number of voice and fax lines in use, and if fiber is available near each building. Next, we surveyed each department head and constitutional office for the needs of their respective departments. We asked how many We asked how many and what type of phones would be requested and what features are needed. Two quotes have been received, and we are currently expecting a third quote by the end of this week. The next step will be to review the quotes provided and ask follow-up questions to the vendors if needed. You have any questions? I'd answer them.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Sean.
I have no questions for Mary Beth. I have a couple comments in general and a question for Mr. Harvey. Mr. Stern, I appreciate what you did. You did exactly what I'm sure you were asked, and my comments have no reflection on your report out. But what I asked for was a written report from the county. That's what we agreed to last time. This, we still haven't received a report, so it was a conversation that's helpful. So I'll restate my request from last month. I would like a report on the activities. I'd also like to understand how come with all that that was discussed, which is good, the county provided response to a FOIA request on August the 12th that says there have been no recommendations from the committee to date? Can you help with that?
The, the response to the FOIA request was the total of the communications that were housed in administration. FOIA requests are for communications, and that's what we went looking for. And if the response was there were none, there were none in the files.
But that's not what the response said. It didn't say we have no documentation. It said definitively, there have been no recommendations from the committee. And the citizen, as we all were carbon on these, challenged that response and never got a response back from the county on that.
I'll take a look at that response.
I would appreciate it. Would love it if we'd just respond to the citizens directly when they're doing it instead of having us get involved. What would, what will it take for the board to get informed ongoing of what the IT Committee is doing? We don't get any updates on what they're doing. Understand some things to be confidential, that's fine. We get a lot of confidential information. Why do we receive no updates about what's happening with the IT Committee?
I guess we can start giving updates. A lot of this stuff was just talking and figuring, figuring out infrastructure, which way we need to go. Make it more formal. We can start giving.
Thank you.
I don't know if it would be done in public, being we trying to keep.
I didn't say, yeah, absolutely.
Just a written update.
Whatever method you find best. Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions? All right, that brings us to the Emergency Management Committee. This is the presentation on the radio system that Sean and I have been on the committee for, ongoing for a year or so. We are finally at the point.
Yes, we are very excited. Thank you so much for long as to be here. Kent, did you want to open it up?
Sure. Well, thank you. My name is Cheryl Jigges. I'm a principal consultant with CTA, and we're very excited to be here tonight because we have some results for you so that we can move forward. So what I'm going to talk about are some of the accomplishments, what we've been doing over the last year, and then talk about the proposed radio system designs that you have received from proposers, and then go through the evaluation process and talk about our recommendations and the next steps. So we did publish an RFP back in December of 2021. We had a pre-proposal conference, and we had quite a few addendums that went out based on questions that the potential proposers had on our RFP. And then we received proposals on March 31st of 2022. You received three proposals, one from Communications International Incorporated, Motorola Solutions Incorporated, and L3 Harris Technologies Incorporated. We were very pleased actually to see such a robust response to your RFP. We then got to the heavy work, not only CTA representatives, but also a wonderful review committee led by Kent, and we reviewed all of these proposals. And that takes a bit of time because we also needed to ask them questions. So we had a number of questions on the technical proposals as we were going through them. We also did reference checks, which we felt was very important on your behalf, and then just went through a detailed technical scoring. We also, at that point, wanted to give the proposers an opportunity to come and give oral presentations, to really give us their proposed designs and allow our review team to ask them any questions or share any concerns they might have. So that occurred, that invitation went out on June 30th, and we had our presentations on July 22nd and July 25th. Now, once we did that, we then started to look at all the price proposals. So we've done the technical, now we're looking at our price. We also had a few questions about that, so we sent questions to all of our respondents, and we basically finished that process really towards the end of September. And we requested a best and final offer from each of our proposers, and we did receive that on October 14th. And then we provided a draft evaluation report to our review committee on October 17th. So what I'm going to do very quickly is just walk you through the three designs that you received. Communications International proposed to you a 700 megahertz five-site, four-channel system, and you can see the sites here that they did propose. And it's important to show those sites with you because what you see now is the coverage that would result from those sites that Communications International proposed. What you're seeing on the left is mobile coverage, so that would be the coverage a person would have with their, in their vehicle using a mobile radio. What you see on the right is the portable outdoor coverage. As we know, most of our users do not stay in their vehicles. They have to get out, operate out in the outdoor environment as well as go into buildings. So that's what's represented on the right-hand side. Your next proposal was received from L3 Harris. They offered again a 700 megahertz four-site, four-channel P25 Phase II system. These are the four sites that they selected for their design, and this is the resultant coverage, mobile coverage on the left and portable outdoor coverage on the right. Our last proposal was from Motorola Solutions. They also offered a 700 megahertz four-site, four-channel P25 Phase II trunk system. These are the four sites that they selected, and their coverage for mobile is on the left and their portable coverage is on the right. So those are the proposals that you received. So now what I'm going to walk you through is the evaluation. What you're seeing in front of you now is the evaluation criteria that we presented in the RFP that was in Appendix A that was accepted by all proposers. We broke this up into a few categories. We have pricing, which totaled 30 points, our technical, which totaled 70 points, for a total of 100. That's base points, but then we also said we'll give extra points based on the performance in the oral presentation as well as your best and final for an opportunity to receive 115 points. What you're seeing now is a resultant scoring for each of your proposer. So for pricing, CI had a score of 26.61, Harris 27.02, and Motorola 27.48. For our technical scoring, we had CI at 64.15, L3 Harris at 64.2, and Motorola at 65.88, which is a total base scoring of 90.77 for CI, 91.22 for Harris, and 93.36 for Motorola. Now, once we add our additional scoring in for our orals and our BAFO, that gives us a total scoring for CI of 103.9, L3 Harris 104.18, and Motorola 106.84. So as you can see from this, Motorola Solution did score the highest. Now what I'm showing you is the pricing that you received. Again, you'll see it is broken down in multiple categories, but basically you're seeing that infrastructure. So that's really the representative of that technical scoring, and then the subscriber cost is our subscriber unit. So we have our infrastructures, our towers, our radios, our sites, everything that it really is the backbone of your system. And the subscribers are those pieces of equipment that are in the vehicle and that you carry out on the street. So as you can see, our total pricing for project implementation, and that's the cost that we want to focus on this evening because that would be the cost that you would sign a contract potentially. We will continue to negotiate. And for Communications International, that was 6.988 million. For Harris, it was 6.6 million, and for Motorola, it's 6.373 million. You will see at the bottom the running costs for the next 15 years, and you see they vary widely from 4.2 to 5 million. Those are costs that will continue to be negotiated. You would not sign that contract initially. That would not be signed until you've finished implementing your system and cutting over, and that gives you an opportunity to really decide what maintenance costs you really feel like you need for your system. So again, that's why we're focusing on that line for the project implementation grand total. So based upon all of that scoring and the pricing we received, we are recommending that Amelia County issue a notice of intent to award to Motorola to provide a 700 megahertz P25 Phase II trunk simulcast radio system consisting of four sites and four channels, and this is based upon, they ranked the highest in overall scoring. They did have the lowest initial project implementation price. They're meeting our critical RFP requirements. They did comply with the coverage guarantee requirement, which is critical. They are offering system redundancy, and they're providing dual-van radius for all of our public safety users, which will really enhance our interoperability, and not only during implementation, but moving forward. If the board chooses to move forward with this recommendation, our next steps will be to notice that intent, issue that notice of intent to award. We then need to verify our subscriber quantities to make sure that we'll be signing a contract for exactly what you need, and then select some radio system options. There were some options that we required in the RFP, and that's something that the review team will need to critically review and evaluate and make decisions on. You would then sign your contract, and then really very promptly after that, we would start negotiating our site leases. We want to make sure that we have all of our sites in place and we can get the best possible price for you. One thing I do like to do is show you the schedule moving forward. If we were to be able to negotiate a contract quickly and have that resolved, really by the end of this calendar year or the first of next year, we believe that you could be up and operational on this system by fourth quarter of 2024. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to say that the CTA has done a great job in bringing us all the information, getting our questions answered. Just want to remind everybody, this is considered a public safety, but this is every radio in the county. Forest Department, Forest Department, EMS, Public Works, school, I think the schools got a radio on each bus and multiple, lots of handhelds, all under one system. And for, we need to contact, if the Forest Department needs to contact a school bus, they can do it from one radio. Makes safety a whole lot better. That's where we're at. Before that anymore, any of any discussion? Mr. Wyatt, you've been on this committee TV.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what you said. Can't thank CTA enough. I will admit that most of this stuff, technology-wise, is way over my head. I'm sure everybody's. And your professionalism and attention to detail, I mean, just, it's, it's made the process easy and helped to break it down so we could understand it. I think I can speak for any, any first responder in the county, public safety, that we've been dreaming about this project for over 15 years. It's, it's needed. It's, it's, as far as public safety goes, it's definitely a needed project. So I think that, I know that we're all excited on that side to see it come to fruition, and you know, it, it's just one of those things where, just to keep, to keep it simple, right now, we currently have a one-point failure system that has failed. We have had it, and we used our cell phones to talk to each other during a hurricane a few years ago. So to have that multi-point system that won't fail and won't, won't cut us off, I mean, it's, it's a very important piece of, of equipment, and to unify the entire county as well, I mean, I think that's a huge benefit. So I really appreciate everything y'all have done for us.
And I add, not to unify the county, but also unifies our neighbors. Be able, we will be able to talk to our mutual aid partners even further west. As far as funding, half of this project was put into CIP for this year. Assume the second part would be next year. How does the board feel about us proceeding, going to issue the letter of intent, start working toward implementing this project? Being that amount of money, we would like to entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion. We proceed with the radio project as presented.
Mr. Wyatt, motion on the floor. Any more discussion? All in favor of proceeding with the radio system? Raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, CTA, for giving us a good product to work with. All right, that brings us to the CPMT Committee Appointment. Sure. Sure. I had too many initials on my paper here. Yes, sir.
I asked at last month that we speak about the progress or the changes related to the EMS system for the county. Most of you all are aware that the emergency squad approached the county over the summer requesting assistance, which I think is good on their part. They didn't wait until things became critical before they came to us. So one of the primary things that they were interested in was for us to start assisting them with their contract management, which we have started. We issued an RFP that's been executed. That process is as moved as it should. The next piece of this, because we are going to pick up the contract employee or the contract negotiations, we also have to assume some of the billing responsibilities. And to assume the billing responsibilities is going to require licensing from the state and a number of other hoops that have to be jumped through. We're on the process of completing those. My intention is that they all be completed by the end of this fiscal year so that by the beginning of the next fiscal year in July, the county's operation will be on the county side as opposed to sharing the responsibility with the squad. Does anybody have any questions specific to that?
Got it. The only comment I got, I want to commend the squad for coming to us and asking for help. A lot of other localities are going through a much different situation. We're on the right path. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, now we'll get to the CPMT Committee Appointment. Mr. Robinson, you sit on that committee. Would you like to give us a briefing?
We had a state audit, and apparently we were not up to the requirements of the state. We had a, they thought they had another individual picked out to fill the position at the last minute that fell through, and this was our backup. So this is who we're going with. Never met him yet. All I know is what we received. About all I can tell you right this second.
What is the requirement of the position?
He is a public provider. This is all state mandated. I mean, we don't have an option to pick or who we choose. They're, they're, they work in the field. They work through the public. He's going to be sitting on the committee, which is mandated by the state. He's going to be sitting on the committee, which is mandated by the state.
Okay. This is a, this is a mental health committee, folks?
Is it paid position?
No.
And there's no one qualified in Amelia to fill it? We had to go to a Chesterfield person?
Actually, I think if I remember right, the committee actually sought this person out and asked for our recommendation.
Well, it came, Social Services is handling it. They're the ones that do the locating the person that can meet the requirements to fill in this position. And I don't know if it was FAP or if it was Social Services, whether it was FAP from Petersburg, I don't know. I was not involved in that. They kind of do that on their own, and they tell the committee, this is what we have to do. We don't have an option. This person comes in and sits in the committee with me once a month. You don't get paid for it. Just deal with it.
Thank you.
I feel it's a pretty sensitive appointment. Be hard for us to go look for people in Amelia that meet these qualifications, to have all this experience. What's the board's pleasure on appointing Mr. Robert Byrd to the...
Let me just speak to that. I mean, that's what I was asking. I said, though, like, what are the requirements? We don't have it. I mean, we see his resume. We don't know. I'm going to abstain from the voting because it's just not clear. And I'm not going to distrust it, but it's not clearly clear to what we're supposed to be doing, and we've already not complied with the states. I don't be back into that again.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Easter. What's the board's...
Well, I'll make a motion. We approve Robert Boyd Jr., that sit on the CPMT Committee, as required by the state audit.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. The motion on the floor to approve, make this appointment to the committee. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Let it be noted, Mr. Easter obtained. It brings us to the community development, the ordinance text amendment for alternative That was a discussion at the planning commission, joint meeting with the planning commission. I think all the supervisors had their questions answered. Pretty sure we came to an agreement. What's the board's pleasure on this? We've already had the public hearing, and what changes we made did not meet, have to go through the process again. Do we want to read the changes or what's the board's pleasure?
They've been published. I don't know if we have to read them all.
Make a motion. We approve the alternative energy ordinance as written.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. Motion on the floor to approve the ordinance for solar facilities, alternative energy ordinance. Any more discussion?
I just want to comment, I'm planning to vote in approval. When you said we all came to an agreement, I'm not sure we so much agreed as we just said we're going to move forward. I still don't agree with the 500 to 1,000 foot setback requirement, but all the other options are, I mean, all the changes are just really good for the county. And I think when it's 99% there, we'll just move forward, as you said. That these can be modified for any of the proposals that come through and are actually not requirements, so we can deal with those.
Thank you, Mr. Easter. Any more discussions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, gentlemen. The motion passes to approve the alternative energy ordinance. Brings us to the comp plan amendment. Gentlemen, what do we want to do with the comp plan? Folks, the comp plan is more or less a guide, not as strict as a ordinance. Comp plan just normally gives the direction that citizens want the county to go. We've had public hearings on this as well. Board have any pleasure?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Motion on the floor to pass the comp plan amendment to alternative energy. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries three to two.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just clarification for the record. Both of those actions were to adopt the versions that came out of the recent joint meeting. I just want to make sure that's in the record so we don't inadvertently go back to the advertised version.
And are the versions published for this meeting?
And they were published in the packet and online for this meeting.
You got that added to, make sure that's in the minutes?
Just as amended during the joint planning commission board meeting.
All right, moving on. That brings us to the steps. Have a one request. Mr. Jones, you mentioned the steps committee. You sit on that committee. Believe this is about the housing, emergency housing. You have anything to add?
I don't have nothing to add that, oh, they are doing and who affects and whatever.
Okay, thank you. How you doing, sir?
Good evening. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Harvey, my name is Sean Rozier. I'm the Vice President of Housing with Steps. Appreciate this opportunity to be here tonight with us. Our Chair of the Steps Board, Amelia resident Deborah Adams. Here as we're making this request of the county, certainly also appreciate Mr. Jones' commitment to Steps and our services. And I would like to give as well Sharon Harrop, our President and CEO, since her regrets that she could not join us tonight, she had a prior family responsibility that she needed to take care of. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about our ARPA funding request for $50,000 for the regional project for the homeless. Steps is the DHCD Virginia Homeless Service Solutions Provider for Amelia County, also for Buckingham, Cumberland, Lunenburg, Nottaway, and Prince Edward. As you know, we also provide a host of other services in the region, and we appreciate the support that we receive from Amelia County. About two years ago, there was a regional task force created around the need for services for the homeless in our region. And so out of that, the work of that task force, a plan was developed for a tiny home village and community center in the town of Farmville to connect to water and sewer on the bus line to serve the homeless of the region. In Amelia County, over the past two years, we have provided emergency shelter services in hotels for 17 households and 42 individuals. Also, in the past couple of years, assisted with rent and mortgage assistance in an effort to keep people from becoming homeless. So we have assisted 23 households and 70 individuals for roughly $84,921. So there, there is a need out there for these services for the people of the county. So what we have, we sent a initial proposal to the county back in January requesting funding. We have a potential property in Farmville that we've identified, and we have begun to raise funds for the project. The letter that you have before you tonight gives the latest updates on where we stand. We have raised up to this point 468,333 towards the cost of the project. We have also requested ARPA funds from all the other counties in the region and the town of Farmville. So currently, right now, the only option we have to serve the homeless in this region is sheltering in hotels. While it's helpful, much more is needed to help them get established and stably housed again. The other update that we provided in this letter, in addition to the funding, was the planned services at the village. We're planning to provide supportive housing services for the homeless, not just emergency shelter. Supportive housing provides essential housing and services in an effort to improve housing stability, employment, mental and physical health, and school attendance. Individuals and families in supportive housing can lead more stable and productive lives as they transition towards more long-term housing. So for instance, you may have heard of the Longwood Village project that was, is being worked on in the Farmville region. These would be, we'd be trying to transition people into that type of housing. We have, as I've said, requested support from all the counties and the town, just so you understand, we have requested higher levels of support from some of the highest users of the service. And the two highest users are Prince Edward and Nottaway County. So we've requested 100,000 from Prince Edward and 75,000 from Nottaway. We've, the smaller users of the service, we've, we've asked for 50,000. So I would just ask for your consideration and happy to answer any questions about our proposal, but we feel, you know, there's, these services are needed here in our region instead of sending everybody out of the region. So happy to answer any, any questions that you might have about our request.
Thank you, sir. Have the other counties made any, have they started the process or made appropriations to that?
No, no appropriations have been made, but we have a presentation before Lunenburg County tomorrow night. We've had discussions and meetings with Prince Edward County, and they, you know, they've indicated a receptivity. And we frequently get asked, what are the other counties doing? So we're going to all of them, hoping to secure commitments from as many of them as possible so that their citizens can have access to the program.
Mr. Jones, if you'd like to add, you said that you're very involved in the steps. You got anything you wanted to add?
Oh, he's pretty well covered it from what I know. Like I said, I talked to him. Just now, a little bit of a tight time to be asking for money. Stand there. But also, I know we need to provide a service for the kids that y'all take care of and the people who are less fortunate than a lot of us. And that, you know, I always want to make a proposal that we bring this up after first of the year, discuss, just see how other counties is, how receptive they've been to it, and you can think about it and decide on it. Don't want to jump the gun and say no or yes right now.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah. We put this off to January, then started on the next budget cycle and see how things are going.
Okay. Gentlemen, there's a motion on the floor to not deny or say yes to this after the first of the year. Any more discussion?
I had some questions for Mr. Rozier, but I think as we've moved past that, so revisit it in January, I suppose. You were, you were starting by talking about, you know, the different volumes of users across counties. I think that's a good, good topic there. Did you say it was 89 families that had been helped, were helping with the homeless situation? You stated a number earlier in your presentation.
Those were Amelia County families.
There's 89 from Amelia.
So...
They're currently being, or what time period?
So during the time period, the last two fiscal years, the sheltering were 17 households, 42 individuals from Amelia. And then we provided rent and mortgage assistance to Amelia residents to prevent homelessness. Seven, 70 individuals, 23 households. That would not count, you know, the state had vendors that also provided rent relief.
Right.
That probably was considerably more than that.
But how, generally, how does that compare to the other counties then? Like, I hear you say we're not as, the high user as Nottaway and Prince Edward. What are their volumes then look like compared to ours?
But as I mentioned, Prince Edward is the number one user. And I don't have their numbers with me here tonight, but they are substantially higher.
Yeah.
Led to us requesting actually more. I can get you those.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind you following up with that because I liked the way you were thinking about that. And I hear you saying substantially, but the difference then between 50,000 and 100,000 would lead me to think they're twice as much, but it, I suspect they're quite a bit more than twice as much, and therefore the distribution might should be reviewed a little differently.
Certainly.
But I'd love to see those numbers as we prepare for revisiting in January. Thank you.
The, what's the average stay? I mean, these are temporary homes. If you do a hotel, what is the average stay?
Hotels during the pandemic, sheltering probably lasts anywhere between three to six months. Finding permanent housing became very challenging because there wasn't a lot of availability with eviction moratorium and people not really moving around much. So that it became very challenging for people to find housing, so it was longer. Like to keep it around 60 or 90 days, excuse me, but go longer.
How many people, families could you hold in this facility?
Once this facility is completely built, we anticipate 30, approximately 30 units. So our breakdown generally, a third of our caseloads are families with children, sheltering caseload, a third of it, and two thirds are individuals and couples. That, that would be roughly how we would break it down.
Okay.
When it's, when it's built.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
What is the total dollar amount? The estimate that we have right now includes a 15% contingency because of the construction volatility is at 1.32 million for land acquisition and construction. And it's on a three, be a three acre plan. The community center, that includes the community center where services, focused services can be provided to help with that employment piece and the health and the housing search and some of the other focused services that really need, that people really need. It'd be good to have that one location where community partners can come, provide service because to do it with people spread in hotels is a challenge.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Mr. Jones, you still good with your motion? Motion on the floor to visit this after the first of the year, maybe hear from some other counties possibly. All those in favor? All those in favor, raise your hand. O, motion carries.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
We have the extension, extension report.
Mr. Chairperson, members of the board, and Mr. Harvey, I am here representing Virginia Cooperative Extension and to give you some insight as to why we are probably going to need to request additional funding. A little background information, in 2015, my position was split between Powhatan, a mutual agreement between Powhatan and Amelia County, a 2030 split. In Ju, July of 21, the funding for the position wasn't, my turn back to Amelia full-time, wasn't included in that budget, which created a shortfall. So, my purpose here is to give you a summary of the accomplishments of Virginia Cooperative Extension. My position is family consumer sciences, and I have my colleagues here up to give you a little background summary of what they've been doing so far. So, I've submitted my report, and I just wanted to summarize some of the things I've been doing most recently, which is I've been promoted as a senior extension agent. I have been working with the Piedmont Senior Resources and Centrus Outside Hospitals for chronic disease prevention. I've worked with the Powhatan County Free Clinic, providing nutrition, education, and financial resources to their clients over the years, working with the Amelia County Elementary School with the STEM program. I started a character education program during the pandemic that was virtual, so now it's in-person at the elementary school with the STEM program. So, that's enough about me for right now. I do have, okay, I do have a report from our new ag agent, because in the meantime, we included in our family of extension agents, we hired a 4H agent in June, June, and last year, 2021, in February, we hired our ag agent, Mackenzie Gunn. So, the report from our ag agent, I've spent a lot of the first year meeting with farmers and producings around the county, connecting with many community members who had never utilized extension, and reconnecting with individuals who had not called upon extension in many years. She's cultivating relationships with specialists, agents, and other agencies in the area, producers, and updated research and information. This year, she ran an ag tourism program with speakers and partners from Virginia State University, Farm Bureau Insurance, and Amelia County. It was hosted at one of the local wedding events. I forgot the September, July. So, that was just a little bit of background. Mackenzie's only been here since February.
Good evening, my name is L.K. Mandray, I'm the 4H agent. I started at the end of June, so I've been here a little over four months. It is a new 4H year. The 4H year goes from October the first to September the thirtieth, so every year, we roll over all of our volunteers and members, and they have to re-enroll. So, in the past month, I've recruited and enrolled six new volunteers, and I'm actively seeking more so that we can grow our program. We have restarted the Amelia Livestock Club, we just had our first organizational meeting, that's why Mackenzie and I relate to this meeting, where the kids learned all about 4H, parliamentary procedure, and how to run a business meeting. They nominated officers for their upcoming election in December and discussed those responsibilities that they would have as officers, discussed our plan of action for the year ahead, including opportunities for training, competitions, and started getting to know each other. A few weeks ago, my husband and I attended an instructor training offered through the Virginia 4H Shooting Sports Program to become certified in archery. I'm already certified in pistol and plan to recruit more adult volunteers willing to get certified at the spring training. That training is only offered twice a year, so it's important to get people in for that in hopes of beginning a shooting education program here, starting with archery and BB. So, I'd encourage anyone interested in participating or learning more to contact me. And then, finally, I've partnered with other 4H agents around the, our area on various programs, most recently to start in-school 4H clubs for fourth and fifth graders in a school that's never had 4H clubs, so that's exciting. And I'm looking forward to creating and building similar opportunities in our local schools here in order to fully revitalize the 4H programming here and provide impactful experiences for more Amelia County youth. Thank you.
You said all of that in hopes that you would consider looking at a revised budget and having those funding, that funding irregularity addressed. We hope that we can continue to be of service to the members of our community, and we hope that, proud to have had you support us over the past few years, and hope that we can count on you for continued support in the future. We are currently in talks with the finance director to figure out some other solutions to handle this issue, so any of those financial questions I'd have to refer to district director or the finance person. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's around twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-four and maybe more or less.
That's right. Ms. Sonia Ferguson actually brought a revised request this evening. It's significantly lower from the original request. There has been a different proposal from the Cooperative Extension to revert to a traditional form of percentage split, which would require a thirty-three percent, or thirty-three-point-three-four percent match versus a fifty percent match. So, that brings the new request to, second, an additional three thousand two hundred and Three thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars. I would actually recommend looking at where we have some surplus to actually do a budget transfer rather than a budget appropriation. Think we can cover that in the current budget as it is now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think if we're working within the budget and we can find the money, I don't believe there would be a motion necessary, but if we can't find it, we'll let you know at some point in the future, and take care of it then.
Freshwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have an option. And it's not a lack of maintenance. I've got pictures, if anybody wants to see them, I have them.
Do you have any sense of why the consultants told us that it was due to deferred maintenance and decisions made about how to handle maintenance? They were paid to do the assessment.
I don't, I think it was explained wrong, or either you took it wrong, because this building is maintained. I got there early before our appointment and kind of snooped around outside, took pictures. You walk in the front door of this place, first thing I was looking at was ceiling tiles. That tells you a lot about a building maintenance is ceiling tiles. I did not find a ceiling tile in that entire building that had a stain, a spot, or a scratch on it. And it wasn't something they done to set up to show us because they knew, what, three or four days prior to us showing up for the walkthrough. There was only two places in the whole building that I saw was missing paint, and that was on the two doors that accessed what they call the towel room, where they actually watch all the, the wings of the juvenile detention. I mean, I think there's a lot of places around here that could learn from her maintenance.
I guess they did explain it wrong, because I know it wasn't just me, because I remember Mr. Jones even saying that night, if it was, and if the superintendent was an employee in Amelia, she'd be run out of, run out of town based on how they described.
That was wrong.
The work, no. Being done, because I remember agreeing with Mr. Jones even during that one. What was the, what, so y'all provided many, many pages of a legal agreement. What's the, what's the context you're trying to get out of that piece?
I was just trying to provide the background so you could understand the, the ownership, where it came from, a little bit about what it's about, and how the maintenance and different costs are shared.
I'm going to agree with Mr. Jones again with his earlier comments tonight about money being tight and needing to watch all the pennies. It's, it's hard to spend another almost five hundred thousand dollars that wasn't budgeted. They've made all these comments about people needing to come during budget process. Don't understand how we support that.
They, they're figuring on getting started first of the year.
Current budget surplus, I highly doubt you're going to find half a million dollars in unspent surplus. I just don't see, I don't think the numbers would, I can run those for you, though, absolutely.
Well, first off, my question is.
CIP doesn't have, like, allocated the CIP money already, right?
Three-point-three million dollars to the CIP.
Yeah. So, I like where Mr. Feltes is going with the money surplus. I mean, it's, while it is almost five hundred thousand dollars, that wasn't the only option presented to us. So, we did have five options for payment, you know, spreading it out over one, basically one, two, three, or four. Super clear here, but over several years, if we were to do that, that might make it more palatable.
I believe, yeah, I believe the lowest number was a hundred and fifty, if memory serves me correctly. You, you might have a hundred and fifty in unspent surplus, but again, I would have to run those numbers to find that out.
The next question would be, if we don't do this, what happens to the juvenile detention center? Do they close it and let all the juveniles out?
They told us if we did, they said in the presentation, if they didn't, they would just have to do repairs as they come up out of their normal budget.
The other counties have all approved this.
She's never asked us for a dime prior, is what she told me, in the, for maintenance. They paid for the roof replacement out of, out-of-state children, from fees from that.
You mean the year things, or it was? Slide here, you just want to look at it? Here, just look at it. Is that what you mean? That was the option, year option?
I don't think it's necessary to decide how you're going to pay for it tonight. I think the question is, are we going to do it? If we can let them have the answer to that question, you've got some time in the future before any of the money is going to be due.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Piedmont Juvenile Detention Center funding
Can you just clarify that? So, that was to, to your committing to the four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, but not when to pay it? Is that correct? Is that the intent of the motion?
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gend, maybe who, I don't know what the issue is, but I could speak to what I understand of the ordinance, but it might help if we know why it's on the agenda.
We've got, well, we've all gotten tons of information from the Commissioner of Revenue about this. It's historically been, they've historically been exempted in Amelia, but as they try to reconcile, and Laura can provide more, there is no ordinance on file in Amelia that she was able to find, I think, stating that, is that correct?
So, in 2018, we started this conversation about this topic. It's been more regularly since 2020. I've brought it up a couple of times to numerous individuals. I was led to believe, or I was under the impression, that the way that the current ordinance is written, it was not exempted because the ordinance has an old code in it. A couple of hours ago, Jeff sent me an email and said that the current ordinance should be okay to continue along with how practice has always been done. However, I would like to offer to go ahead and type up the new ordinance so that it matches the outline of our other ordinance, and it's spelled out plain and simple for everybody to see. It has mopeds and ATVs in it as well. We are currently exempting those, and they would still be exempted the way Jeff has explained it to me today, but it would be more outlined and clear for people to see, kind of like following the other ordinance right before it, which is the farm items ordinance. And as simple as it is to just type it up and do it, I don't see a reason to not do
I think that can probably be done through E360, the code company, who updates the county code. The distinction between the way the board has done the household good ordinance, goods exemption ordinance, which is the one we're talking about here, is that ordinance back in the sixties, nineteen sixty-six, I think, just incorporated everything that's in state law. So, that's, the way it was done was everything, you know, Amelia hereby exempts from taxation, all the household goods set forth. the household goods set forth in this state law. And when you do that, you don't have to, you don't have to list them out, and you don't have to keep adding them. You're basically mirroring the state law. But the commissioner is correct in that you don't, you're not going to see them itemized, right? Because if, when you do it that way, unless you ask the code company to do that. Now, with the farm equipment ordinance, the board has chosen in the past to not do it that way. The board, it's a similar statute with different types of property that you can exempt from taxation. However, the ordinance to do that did not incorporate the statute and say Amelia County is going to exempt all these types of things from taxation. Under that ordinance, it said, we're going to exempt some of these things that we can exempt, and some of them were not. So the, historically, the county has not exempted every single item, and that ordinance has been updated fairly recently, and that's the way that one's been done. So when you see them in the county code, one of them has broken down, you know, a list of eight or 10 items that are exempt, and one of them simply references a state code statute. But they do operate differently. One is sort of on cruise control, right? It doesn't list them all out, but you never have to touch it. But I think if we, I think we can probably do this through your code company. I think we can talk to them about it, but I think we have to make sure that we don't change it so that it's suddenly operating like the others, other ordinance. We want to make, if you want to keep it mirroring the state code, it should say that. But that doesn't mean you can't enumerate. It just means every year, things change. We'd have to, you know, make sure the code company, we catch it, we flag it, and put it in, in there so the list is right.
I sent Ashley a copy of Notaways. Notaways is written the same way ours is right now, but then it goes ahead and lists everything that's already there.
Yeah.
So I was just going to copy what Notaway had.
Okay. Yeah, that, that probably works. I think we can, we can, I don't think this requires, in other words, a new ordinance because I think your, the passport action is sufficient, but I think it's more of an administrative function with the code company that I think we could sort out.
I'm fine with that part. Since you brought in the farm exemptions, let me ask you a question on that. So one of them is item 10, motor vehicles used exclusively for agricultural purposes, fine, which the owner is not required to obtain a registration certificate, license plate, and decal. With the state law changes neck, and I'm fine with that concept, but the state law changes next year that requires agriculture use vehicles to get license plates, even though they will be farm use plates, but they're officially licensed plates. Maybe we just need to look at that to make sure that it's still going to comply. Like, I wouldn't want the state law to all of a sudden force us to be taxing something that we don't intend to.
I imagine that this year, there will be a code or something, some kind of change where you go to legislative days to fix that because it's in there, but I mean, Jeff may know that than I do.
So, so when you say, in that case, when it says pursuant to and lists the state code sections, does that mean then, even though we're calling it out, not just referencing, we would automatically change that when the, when the state code changes?
Correct.
Okay.
And so it's 58.1-3504. So in the way, so the way this, we're talking about the household goods or the farm?
I was talking about number 10 in the farm.
Oh, the farm, no, the farm one is not, no, the farm one is, is not, does not operate like that. Yeah, so, so.
That's my, that's.
And that's the drawback of doing it that way, is you always have to make sure it mirrors the current state code.
I, that's what I understood you to say. And I'm just saying, I think we need, we need to then go back and revisit that item number 10 because if the state's starting to require the license plates, that would change here, based on my reading. We don't need to do that tonight.
Yeah, I mean.
But that, that goes into effect next summer.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think that can be looked at.
Yeah.
Make sure we keep it clean, keep it, keep it up to date.
Exactly. Intent would be the same, current language. Thank you.
I would like to do that, if that, if that's okay. Yes, it's still going to say this, it's going to get, accomplish the same thing, but it'll be much more clear for anybody trying to read it. Right? Thank you.
We can clarify to the citizens that the current exemptions will remain. We have to do anything, just continue the way it has been.
So that point, then, are all the, are the current tax bills, do they have to be adjusted a bit? It's already for this year? Okay. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the first item under tab 13, the tip-in fee from Waste Management for October is $228,752.65. Down a little bit from what we've, where we've been for most of the past year. Commonwealth Regional Council has submitted their items of interest for month. Anybody's got any questions about those? I'm sure that Mr. Jones or possibly myself could answer them. The DMV Select Report for the month is in. We've got $34,808.95 worth of food compensation for the year, $3,362 for the month. Then we've got the VDOT abandonment letter. This is for a very thin strip of land up on Johnson Road. There was a highway improvement project. It's just there in the radius. There was some unused property, and VDOT is going to abandon it back to the adjoining landowners. County received a copy of that, and we forwarded to you for your review. We have no objection. Seems like the right thing to do. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I don't have that.
Yeah, first, I'd just like to thank all our veterans. Veterans Day is coming up, and I can never thank you enough for your service and what you've done for the country. We really appreciate it. And thank you to Mr. Leipes. Today, David touched on it earlier, the flag ceremony at the courthouse. The flag that was, was brought there was flown at ground zero. I'm sure, looking around, most of the people in this room remember 9/11 very vividly and how that impacted everybody. I mean, it was the most devastating thing to happen on American soil, so you can't forget it. But the importance of that flag, you know, it, it flew there. It, it, for, for, for the time it was there, it unified the country. It brought everybody together. It invoked patriotism, invoked neighbors helping neighbors. You know, it, overnight, it turned our first responders into heroes, as well as just, just being a living memorial for all of those that died that day since then. And, and for this flag to, it's, it's been around the world. It's been in battlefields. I was told that it was in the cave where they found Osama bin Laden. I mean, this flag is, is a living piece of, most significant thing to happen in modern history in our country. And for it to have traveled and been all the places it was, I mean, what an honor it is for Amelia County to be able to raise this flag. And it, it was by far the, the most outstanding thing I've been able to ever take a part in in my life was to be, have the honor to participate in that event and to see that flag raised and come back down and know that it's, it's going to continue going around, just, you know, honoring, honoring everybody, you know, everybody that was affected by that day and everybody that's fought and keep us free since then. So thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing about it and where it goes and keeping it alive.
No, I can agree with what Sean just said. It was a, it was a special day. I appreciate Mr. Leipes for doing it for us.
Very well said.
I'm happy to state the motion if you'd like. We need a motion in convening closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A1 to discuss personnel matter involving the county administrator's performance evaluation and 2.237-11A3 for the discussion of the acquisition of real property for public purpose where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the county. Now, it's not on the floor yet. Just said what it is.
I'll, I'll make the motion as mentioned with all the numbers and language.